Okay, everyone ready? We're going to start. It's now according to my computer here at seven o'clock. I will now call the Town of Batavia Planning Board meeting to order for Tuesday, March 16th. Because of the novel coronavirus pandemic, the state and federal bans on large meetings and gatherings. In pursuant to Governor Cuomo's executive order, the Town of Batavia Planning Board meeting will be held electronically via Zoom video. Instead of a public meeting, minutes of the meeting will be posted on the Town of Batavia website. Now, this is a regular meeting. This is not a public hearing. And I welcome all of you that have joined us. And if you have something that you feel you could add, raise your hand, but normally we do not have the public speak at these meetings. Okay, roll call please, Kim.
Paul Marquesi. Paul McCullough.
Here.
Luke Paganello. Don Partridge.
Here.
Jeremy Lyles.
Here.
Jonathan Long.
Here.
Steve Tanner.
Here.
Brooks Holly. You're all set, Kathy.
Okay, Brooks told me he could not attend tonight. He had a legislative meeting. Lou cannot be here and Don Partridge will is at the meeting, but he will not vote or participate. Our alternate member, Steve Tanner, will be participating in voting. The first thing here is approval of minutes of the meeting from March 2nd. You will receive them. Did you have a chance to look at them?
Move to motion.
A motion by Jeremy.
I'll second it. Paul McCullough.
Seconded by Paul McCullough. Any additions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Pose. Thank you very much. Okay, I'd like to have a motion to take the TruStale seeker off the table.
So move. Paul?
Paul McCullough. Is there a second?
Yeah, I'll second it.
Seconded by Jeremy. Roll call please.
Hold on a second. Paul McCullough.
Yes.
Jeremy Lyles.
Yes.
Jonathan Long.
Yes.
Steve Tanner.
Yes.
Kathy Jazinski.
Yes. Okay, we're right where we were last week at this point. We had reviewed the seeker. We had a lot of questions. We've had time to look at things. We've had an updated site plan. We've all had lots of questions. People have called me. I have one thing. I think I'd like to do it right now. I got a letter from Christopher and Christine Long. They live on the east side of the project. They asked me if I would read this letter prior to us doing anything. So I will do that. I told them I would. The purpose of this letter is to address the proposed project on the Ellicott Street Road in Batavia. As 11-year residents of the Batavia Stafford Town Line Road, it's necessary to convey our many concerns of a solar panel project so close in proximity to our home. First and foremost, political positions, especially in a small community such as ours, should be used to improve our community. Political positions should not manipulate own property and intended projects for personal gain. Moral resuscitation is required. Donald Partridge's land has been involved in many of the Town of Batavia projects over the years. While it's our understanding that he must abstain from voting on this project, he has been and continues to be wholly inappropriate for Mr. Partridge to consistently sell his land to parties directly involved in the Town of Batavia building projects while he is serving another seven-year term with the planning board. As a board member, it is a manipulation of monetary resources provided by taxpayers such as ourselves in a blatant and obvious conflict of interest. Secondly, our home has been an investment for ourselves and our children for the past 11 years. We have maintained our property carefully considering its integrity and value. The proposed solar panel project dramatically decreases the value and resale of our three parcels, including 5.4 acres of land with 1,080 feet of frontage on the Batavia Stafford Town Line Road. Furthermore, we are concerned for the safety and well-being of our family as an impending solar panel project emerges and which is essentially our backyard. According to the Town of Batavia's posted and published Building and Zoning Mission Statement, the Town of Batavia has a responsibility to protect and promote public health, safety, morals, and general welfare for all residents in the town. Additionally, the Town of Batavia aims to provide adequate light, air, and privacy to promote safety from fire, flood, and other dangers, and extend our services to protect and conserve the value of land in various districts and to prevent the pollution of streams, ponds, and to preserve the integrity, stability, and beauty of the community. The proposed solar project is in direct conflict with your mission statement. A solar project of this scale directly affects the value and integrity of the land, the value and integrity of our home, the safety and well-being of our family. There are no consequential or withstanding studies regarding the safety of industrial solar panels. While this technology provides a quick and easy solution to a progressive issue, there is no knowledge in what the installation of this type of equipment will do to the surrounding area in the long term. In essence, the solar panel project attempts to solve a problem but creates another. There is no concrete knowledge regarding pollution, chemical travel, or the impact of a project of this scale could have on our family, specifically our children. Moreover, as taxpaying residents near this project, we have no knowledge if collected solar energy will positively impact our community or if it is being sourced elsewhere. While we are not interested in supporting the project at all, we are especially not interested in housing projects that do not directly and positively impact our community, especially so close to our home. Additionally, this project disrupts the surrounding farmland and displaces the consistent wildlife in the area. We have regular sightings of deer, coyote, and other reasonable wildlife for our area. This project will inevitably decrease the available natural environment for the present wildlife and push the already limited resources for wildlife dangerously closer to our property, our home, our children, and our pets. It is unfortunate that all these aforementioned concerns may be regarded as a moot point compared to the desire of the board to proceed with the solar project. It is also unfortunate that the board would move forward with any type of project disregarding the rightful concern of the taxpayers. However, if this project proceeds, we adamantly insist that in addition to the installation of a code-required eight-foot perimeter fence, that a berm and/or solar rows of trees be included in the plan and established between the east side of the project and our home. The current trees and vegetation that compose the existing hedgerow should also remain intact. It is important to note that we are not in agreement with or support of this solar project at all. However, knowing that the project will most likely continue a berm and/or several rows of trees while maintaining the existing hedgerow is the only compromise as we continue to work towards maintaining the health and well-being of our family, the integrity of the farmland environment of the wildlife and value of our home. We would like this letter read with the board as a witness and placed on record before any type of vote on the project takes place. I told them I would and I did. That was a long letter. Okay, Kim, I'll give you a copy of that later.
Great, thank you.
Say something to respond to that?
Um, maybe not right now, Don.
I'd like to ask relative to the Batavia Stafford Town Line relative to the position of my project.
Okay. Is this part of the seeker that you're going to respond to?
I guess it could be. Relative to Batavia Stafford Town Line, there are at least two properties between any properties on the town line and my property. And there's no way that anywhere on the Batavia Stafford Town Line, you'll be able to see this project. That's all I want to say.
Thank you. Okay, I'm now going to turn the meeting over to Steve Tanner. Like I said, we are where we left off in our last meeting. And that was a discussion on the seeker. Are you ready for this, Steve?
Yep.
Okay.
We had gone through the seeker document, Kathy, so I don't think it really is necessary to do that again.
That's true.
What I would say is that is that there are a couple of issues that we wanted more information on, which is why we tabled this relative to the impacts on aesthetic resources. And I know that we did get received revised site plans from the applicant that showed some additional screening and some additional trees. I do know that the applicant's engineer was also working on a visualization. Unfortunately, I haven't seen that, so I'm not sure if Mr. Leon is able to show us something tonight. And if he is, I would suggest maybe we turn the screen over to him to show us those visualizations so that he is a bird to make an informed decision.
Okay, Mr. Leon, your turn.
Thank you, Ms. Chairperson. Steve, thank you as well. With me this evening is Mark Sweeney and Nick, who you met last time from our civil team. I want to pass this over to Nick. He's going to share a few things with us this evening. One, we'd like to share with you a visual from the Batavia Bethany Town Line Road. Nick has capabilities that allow us to show you the topography and what the change in grade and the relief in either, at least in the one direction, is relative to grade. And then we also want to show you, as noted, some ideas we have for additional screening. We also want to show you some adjustments that have been made to the pole lineup for the interconnection. And then with that, we have some thoughts regarding some burning that we'd like to discuss with the board as well. So with that, Nick, if you would be so kind to take us through this.
Hi, everyone. Nick Overmell. May I share my screen, please?
Be good to go now.
All right. Okay, so here's our revised visual impact assessments. Let me go down. We'll first start with the concerns of that letter and kind of what Don went over. This is a viewshed analysis map. The red highlights, zoom in here. The red is basically shows potential visual locations of the solar array. So obviously, when you're within the array, you can see it. And then with GIS topography, it shows some of the locations where you will have a potential viewshed. This is the Batavia Stafford Town Road line. You can see, you know, potential for, you know, if you're on the right side of the road within the property, you may be able to see some of the array. But a lot of the surrounding area is kind of, you know, out of the viewshed. Except for, you know, these few residences that we've increased our vegetative buffer to help that impact. I'll show you the... And this is actually looking at it without tree canopy, so it's just based on the topography. So this is without any trees in your line of sight. You're just based on the elevation, looking at the site. It's not too much of a difference with the canopy. You know, it's pretty similar. There may be some viewsheds that are minimized with trees.
Nick, if I may, to clarify, this is what the panels raised off of the ground.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Let me show you the viewpoints here. We'll start on Ellicott Street Road. Looking, let's see, this is west of the project up north on Ellicott Street Road. Looking up towards the panels. So just northwest of the entrance, looking up, you can see the array. This is the at installation. So this is, you know, when the array is installed, fencing and landscaping is, you know, the planting year. And then this is a five-year simulation of the plantings. We're starting to get some cover. And then a 10-year simulation. This is our driveway that goes between here, so getting additional edgy through there would be, you know, not possible. Here's the existing entrance before work. Here is at installation. You can see our vegetative buffer along the fence line. We did increase this vegetative buffer. We added this buffer on the east side of our driveway to help screen for these residences. What we did with our pole lineup, there would be the four national grid poles at the entrance. And then we are able to move our pole lineup, which has a recloser and meter on that end for safety reasons. So we were able to move in and, you know, keep that view of the, you know, the whole lineup near the road further into the site to try to, you know, mitigate that eyesore.
Nick, who owns the trees on the right of the driveway?
Let me look.
That's not owned by Don?
No, that's not Don's property. That is Richard.
The Folger property.
Yep.
Well, suppose he decided to take that down, those trees?
No, that's Folger property. I cannot touch them.
We see. Don't touch them.
So let me, I can show you on the aerial here. This is, you know, essentially, let me pull this over here. Driveway coming in here, access point. We're pretty much showing, you know, our vegetative buffer along here. And those trees are all Folger. Not sure who this is. Yeah, that's not Don's property. None of these trees are.
Nick, if you would, please, what's the distance for the board's benefit between pole four and pole five? And could you just show that on the plan view for us approximately?
Yes.
Thanks.
What we are proposing to do is moving our pole lineup. We are proposed to move the lineup. It's approximately 230 feet into the site. And our poles are now within our fence line. Let me zoom in for you. So we do have a small setback of the first four poles that are utility-owned. We go underground up until the next lineup of our private poles. But we were able to move the pole lineup approximately 230 feet up into the site. So that was the, this is the two-to-five-year simulation of the tree plantings. And then the 10-year planting. Sorry, not two to five. It was five-year, and then this is the 10-year. Another view of concern that we found, this one is east along Ellicott Street Road, location three, down southeast, kind of looking up as you would be driving northwest, looking up into TruStale II mostly. And that is right here. So this is the neighboring field next to Don's property. Here's the one tree line between the Batavia Stafford Road line, and then there's another tree line over there. But what we're concerned with, here's the before. We won't be removing any of these trees along this line. You can see lightly, there's our array in there. You know, pretty hard to see through even in the winter months. And same deal. It's unfortunate for, you know, the simulation, well, maybe fortunate for the simulation for worst-case conditions. You know, we're looking at bare trees.
Is that tree line within the property limits?
I could show you here on the civil plan. So the majority of it is not. You can see this bubble line is really the tree line. There's the property line. Slightly, you know, mostly, most of the tree line is not on Don's property.
So if that property owner decided to take that tree line out, there's no room for trees on Partridge's property?
You know, there's probably 15 feet where we, you know, there's a potential for plantings. Let's see, here's the lower view. This is probably a little closer to kind of the viewshed, looking up into there. We are proposing, you know, this landscape buffer along here, along the south and a little bit in the east. But yeah, I mean, you know, we can't say what they're going to do with the neighboring property. But we are, you know, using their screening as is right now. This view doesn't give us a great vantage point, but it's further northwest up Ellicott Street Road, looking towards TruStale I. From this vantage point, there's almost no view of the solar site. You can see, you know, on the horizon, really. And then we get to our addition to the projects, our backyard view. This is before. Let's see, we're at 4957 Ellicott Street Road. I can show that property on the map here.
The ARC currently.
Yes, so right here. Which is this one? We didn't need that. But we were, you know, in their backyard. Jerry got out there and took the photo for us. Looking up the hill. And as we discussed last time, we increased this buffer, brought it down towards the residences to help that screening. This is at installation. And then we can see five-year plantings. A pretty solid wall of plantings there. And then 10-year simulation. You know, it's a heavy tree line there. Any questions on that, on the screening?
Any questions?
I guess my only concern is we're relying on other people's property to screen the project and being a special use permit. You know, if that property owner decided to take those hedgerows out to farm more of the property, where does that leave us? Is there room for enough screening to screen the project? There's a fence line right tight to the property line, and there's no room for any additional screening. Because being a special use, you know, this could come back to the board every year and, you know, reevaluate the screenings and, you know, some of the screenings that were established, the health of those screenings. So I was just curious on that.
Chairman, can I speak for a moment?
Yes, go ahead, Mark.
Thank you. I think the concern you raise is a good one, and it's a good point to consider. But as you say, that if there's another use that's going to be used for that land, it's potentially going to be coming before your board where visual impacts of that project are also going to have to be taken into account, similar to ours. You know, and I think that's something, you know, we have, basically, we're submitting the best information we can as it currently exists for you to make your decision. And then, you know, obviously, as and when the board revisits it as part of its typical special use permit reviews, you know, we'd obviously actively participate in that with you.
Does that answer your question, Jared?
I guess I'm looking for, you know, more of farmers are clearing hedgerows every day to get more use out of their property, and that would not require a special use permit from the board. You know, they could take trees down on their property if, you know, they're sparse. So I just want to make sure if that were to happen, that there's enough room on the project's property to establish a buffer for those residents.
Who can answer that question?
I can answer that. You know, we do have the room on the property to, you know, if that does arise, there is potential to do like a 15-foot buffer along the property line to help that visual.
Anything else, Jared?
I know that's it with the screenings.
I just want to say one thing. I know I was the one that brought up the power poles. I just want to make sure that, you know, this is noted. I'm not all that thrilled with the number of power poles still simply because I've watched them go up, down the road. the number of power poles still, simply because I've watched them go up down the road from my house on the two solar farms that Borrego put in, they managed to get it down to three and two poles. So which photographs were provided to the planning board. Since three of the poles got moved within the fenced in area of the project, I'm, I'm satisfied. I'm not thrilled because I know it can be done to get less and less poles in. But I just want to make it known that, again, I'm not completely thrilled that you got rid of the poles. You moved them. You mitigated the problem. But like I said, I know that you can get less poles because I see it. I just want to make sure that is noted.
Kathy, I agree with Paul. The, the number of poles. You know, I think at the last meeting, we asked for some type of verification from National Grid from, from Jerry and his group on, you know, the number of poles that are specifically needed. And then those, those additional three poles in the back, even though they're moved back farther, you can still see them from the driveway. And I think that's one of the biggest eyesores of these projects is the utility connections. And we want to minimize that visual impact. And those three poles, since they are, I assume they're owned by Cypress Creek. You would think there'd be a way to put that stuff on a ground mounted.
Well, like, like the pictures I sent around, I know it can be done because I see it being done right now. I just don't want to make a precedence for the next solar farm or hamstring the solar committee that has started up at the town saying, you know, you let one come in over on Route 33 because we were novices at this. Two of them, right on West Main, they did a wonderful, fantastic job of mitigating that problem to the best of their ability. But then we fall back on to, we let another one sneak in with, you know, seven poles. So what, what kind of a stick do we have is saying the next guy coming in going, hey, you know, I like to have eight poles and stick them all behind a fence line and have that fence line really close to the road. I mean, I understand that you mitigated the issue. I fully agree with John, the utility poles are ugly on these projects. I know my opinion of them. So that's, that's my thorn right there.
Who can address that? Yes, Jerry.
Thank you, Kathy. And Paul, thank you for sending those photos along and for your comments. So let me address a couple of things there. We definitely made a very good faith effort to request a letter from National Grid. They did take that to their respective management. And unfortunately, upon discussion with their ombudsman, they were not able to provide us with that letter. There are different configurations of pole lineups and they're not in a position to comment on one lineup over another. So unfortunately, as much as we were hopeful to get a letter as you were, we were not able to do so. Let me address, Board members, if I may, the topic of polls and number of them. In our case, let's say over the Borrego case, we do have an additional pole and an additional meter. We feel that that independent meter, if you want to call it that, is a critical component of our project. We're not able to comment about our competitors' project, but we're very much in need of that, that last pole for the independent meter. With respect to the, the plans that were sent, I believe I sent a note suggesting that the two plans didn't match up with each other. One was a line drawing and the other was a site plan. We were hopeful to receive respective drawings that would match each other so that we could further investigate. We were not able to do so with the drawings that we received to date, so that made it a little tricky. However, you know, at this point, I did not see a two pole lineup. Paul, the pictures you sent, I believe the smallest lineup I saw was a three pole lineup with a ground mount enclosure. We are willing to communicate or, or discuss with this board the opportunity for installation of some berming, some soil berms, if that might perhaps be a further mitigation beyond what we show on, on the revised pole arrangement. If the board would be so inclined to want to entertain that as further mitigation. Now, before we perhaps embark on that discussion, I, you know, I will acknowledge that we're not talking about a berm that's 24 feet high. You know, we're not going to be able to visually screen at that, at that elevation. So what we'd be talking about is, is ground berming to perhaps comments raised previously about allowing the project to be a more of a fit, if you will, naturally with the land. So I'll throw that out there as, as a, perhaps again, another mitigation opportunity for your review and, and judgment. Thanks.
But my question is then, like you just mentioned, you had the, the solar projects down on West Main. They have ground mounted equipment. So I'm going on the assumption that they also have a meter or last pole meter, as you would call it, ground mounted, ground mounted cutout blades or, you know, how you have it here. So I guess, you know, educate me why your project can't be ground mounted.
Well, thank you, Paul, for that. I'm not saying it couldn't, but what we're talking about is a fairly healthy price tag. I will tell you that upon further investigation, we would be looking somewhere in the neighborhood of about a $200,000 delta between what we're proposing and going to a ground on, on perhaps a minimum. And that would be, you know, per, per connection. So it gets to the point where, you know, we're talking about a healthy price tag when we start talking about mounting below, below grade.
Any other questions? Steve Tanner, would you like to go back to the review?
Sure, Kathy. I think that was really the only thing that we had, you know, had questions on. I don't know how the board feels on this because the questions, the, the, the items that we checked, that we thought might have a moderate to large impact before we saw these modifications were, the proposed action may be visible from publicly accessible vantage points seasonally and year round and the situation or activity in which viewers are engaged while viewing the proposed action is routine travel by residents, including travel to and from work. We had those as possible moderate to large impacts. There's no doubt that what was presented tonight provides a, a level of mitigation. It's, it's up to this board as to whether or not that level of mitigation brings that down to a small impact versus a moderate to large impact.
Okay, how do, how do we decide that, Steve? Do we need to take a vote on it?
Each person kind of can decide from, from their own. On, on this document, this is a document that, that the, this board agrees on and issues, and that agreement doesn't have to be unanimous. It can be something where, you know, everybody, you know, there's three people that say it's a small to moderate impact and two say, that say that it's a, a lot, larger impact, moderate to large impact. And the three to two vote would win on this, in that case, and they would, you know, we'd pass the seeker with that being a small to moderate impact.
Okay, Kim, would you take a roll call and, and let us, the, the question will be, do you believe it's a small to moderate? Or if it's a large impact? And this is that regarding the seeker and the two projects.
Paul McCullough.
I'm going to still stick with this, a large impact.
Which, which seeker item are we, were we discussing?
The one Steve just talked about, that the visual impact.
Yep, seeker item nine C and nine D dash I.
Okay. Jerry, you've got a question?
You're on mute, Jerry.
I think Mark was maybe going to jump in on a procedural aspect. Maybe not. Mark, were you going to say something?
I, I just wanted to, you know, just remind it, it's, it's, you know, with the new mitigation that we're talking about. And then Jerry, it might be helpful for you to clarify. You know, we had talked about some berming, we had talked about, you know, potentially having room on the, on the side of the project in the event trees were removed. And I think it'd be good for you to clarify what specifically you're offering or what, what the project can do so that when the decision is made on these items, that they have the, the full picture of the information so that they know what mitigation you're proposing.
Great, thanks, Mark. Kathy, would, would it be okay if we took a moment to do that or two?
Yes, please.
Great. Nick, if I could ask, we could show you the area in which we would propose a soil berm and would also show you the area. Nick could perhaps get a little closer to the, to the site and show you the, the corridor where Mark is referring and Nick referred earlier to where future plantings could be placed as needed.
Who needs a screen now, Nick or Mark?
Nick, please.
Okay.
And Jerry, you're speaking of the east side.
Yeah, Nick, go ahead, sure.
So, you know, there's the additional screening that we could, you know, provide on this eastern side of the property. That could also be, you know, increased on this side. And then we did discuss that, that this vegetative buffer in front of the residences could be, you know, placed on a berm to increase, you know, the, the at, at planting visual buffer. You know, it, it is adequate at, at 10 years and mostly adequate at five, but if we place those plantings on a berm, you know, potentially four feet high, that would, you know, be a possibility. But I don't know, Jerry, do you have anything to add to that?
I, I guess I would say before this thing, you know, were to necessarily die on the vine, we would look at a last resort to the opportunity for some ground enclosuring, you know, to, as a further mitigation if needed.
Could you explain that?
Oh, that, that's somewhat along the lines of what Paul has been mentioning, where we would have an elimination potentially of a pole, maybe two, and what would otherwise be hanging in the air from a pole would be enclosed in a small cabinet. I don't know if all of the board members saw the, the photographs that Paul shared, kindly shared with us. It, it's not very large in the sense it's somewhat similar to what you might see for a water utility or a gas utility that sits in a public right of way alongside of the road. It's not overly intrusive per se. It depends, again, what's inside the configuration.
Okay, are there any questions on that?
Oh, that's what I want. That's what I like.
Okay. Okay, so now, now we're talking about the seeker and we're talking about the impact on aesthetic resources. And you have made some changes that I think answer, answer my questions. Has anyone else got questions yet?
Yes, I would just want a commitment on the ground mounted utility poles, the three in the back. I, I would assume since you own them could be ground mounted and then at least one or two of the front ones, based on the other projects can be ground mounted.
Or, or combined even.
John, I don't have that engineering capability at hand, but Nick, I, I hate to put you on the spot, but I, I think we could at least work with the idea that we would, you know, move toward enclosing. I think without maybe doing some design work, it might be difficult for us to commit entirely, but Nick, I look for your support on that. Thank you.
Yeah, I think, you know, the CCR part of the lineup could, could, you know, be ground mounted, you know, for that price tag that Jerry mentioned. On the National Grid side, I'm sure we could work with them to get that ground mounted, or at least, you know, part of it. Yeah. I think that's, you know, it's, it's in the books. It, it does add, you know, construction timeline, you know, implications that make it a little more difficult, but that's something that we can look into with National Grid.
That's all I may ask him for. Thank you.
After we do the seeker, we'll be doing the, the special use permit and those things can be listed on that. Okay, Steve, are we ready?
You know, exactly what I was just going to mention to you, Kathy, is if, if we, if we have that, you know, commitment, then we go into the site plan review, that's part of the special use permit is that those, those, those three poles towards the back of the property become ground mounted and they provide documentation from, from National Grid regarding the four poles up front with the idea that one of them should be able to be ground mounted. That could be part of our condition, site plan approval and/or our special use permit. So as long as we're talking about that, I think it changes the question on, on the moderate to large impact versus small impact. I still think that we should all discuss that if we're in agreement that making that mitigation is a brings it to a small to moderate impact, then that, that was the only remaining thing that we all kind of had to talk about.
Okay, the que, the question is small impact or moderate to large? Those are the two choices. So Kim, would you like to try that again?
Yes, Paul McCullough.
I will go with no to small impact.
Jeremy?
No to small impact.
Jonathan?
No to small impact based on our previous comments.
Steve Tanner?
Yeah, no small impact based on our conversation.
Kathy?
No to small impact.
Anonymous, no to small impact with the modifications being made.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I make a motion regarding seeker that with the mitigation efforts that have been discussed, that this project has no, no, this project would be a negative declaration relative to seeker and that the board passed that negative declaration.
Thank you. We have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it. Paul McCullough?
Okay, when you're ready, Kim, roll call, please.
Steve?
Yes.
Paul McCullough?
Yes.
Jeremy?
Yes.
Jonathan?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
You're all set, guys.
Thank, thank you very much for all the work that you've all done on this. We're now going to proceed. Now, this was a combined seeker, so we had the seeker done for both projects. The next is the site plan review and special use permit, and they are going to be done separately. Okay, and, and the site, the site plan permit, we certainly have looked at a lot of things. Is there anything more we need to see and talk about? Questions from the board? Is Steve, is Steve mountain here? Steve, what have you got to say?
I am. Well, we still have review letters out there. I think much of which have been addressed through the seeker process. But irregardless, depending on the board's wishes, I just want to make sure that if you do do approval, that it's contingent on all of these items and any other items that we re-review on the updated site plans are addressed to our satisfaction. One of the items in Jerry, in One of the items in Jerry, in, we had, you know, an issue on the last project where. It was, um, perceived that the, when the planning board did the site plan approval contingent on engineering approval. That that included the cost estimate for the, uh, uh, decommissioning bonding purposes. I just want to make sure that's clear that, you know, we, we don't agree with the, um, cost estimate for the decommissioning bond. With the salvage value in there, without the salvage value, it's fine. Um, so I just wanted to bring that up and make sure it's clear, um, for everybody's sake. And, and then lastly, I just want to make sure, you know, when we do get, uh, the, um. Uh, comments from Ag and Markets that all of those are addressed, obviously they've got to be addressed to their satisfaction in order for the funding to take place, so. That shouldn't be an issue either. So other than that, I think we're, we're good on the engineering side. Al- along with, you know, obviously all the screening and the, uh, reduction of the polls, et cetera.
And did you like that, the new plan?
Yeah, yeah, I think, uh, and there were some good points and, and again, you know, through the special use, I think. The ability to do buffering, you know, in the event, and I'm not even quite sure on, on the hedgerows, I don't think that they're. Ash trees, but, you know, when the trees become diseased and die and et cetera, you know, there will be a, a visual impact if it can't be. You know, further mitigated in the future.
Okay, Dan Lang, have you got anything to add?
Hi Kathy, um, I think I'd be echoing everything that Steve just said, I know I talked to him, uh. Quite a bit about this and we've been going back and forth for some time, but I, we're, we're all clear on our end and, um. I think like I said, all the questions and going through everything that you have been tonight in detail has been, uh, fantastic as well, so. That's, that's really all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, right now, we're, um, we're looking at parcel number one and this is at five one one seven Elocut Street and it's, um. We're looking at the site plan review and the special use permit. And now what does the board, does the board have any requirements that they would like to add to the special use?
I would say similar to what we've done on previous projects is that the special use permit. Um, indicate that, you know, specifically the pollinator mix, I know it's in the plans is used for the seeding, but that it's also properly maintained. Um, and if, if, um, you know, if it isn't properly maintained, that, that, uh, the special use permit could be revoked. Um, also that any, you know, any of the trees that are in the screenings, um, that may die over the course of the project, get re, uh, replanted. Um, that's the two, that's the two biggest ones from our previous reviews I remember, I, I, um, I don't really remember if we had many more. If the rest of the board can kick in on that, that'd be great.
Um, I think we kind of, I'm sorry Paul, I think we kind of limited the, uh, the excavation, I know it's shown on the plans is two feet, um, for the conduit excavation. You know, in the past, they've gone deeper than their, proposed to go deeper than that, we've kind of limited that, this, these plans do have some, uh. Some cut and fill a little more than the other projects that we've looked at. And it talks about exporting some fill, um, but there are some stockpile areas on the plans by the looks of it. Um, so that's a, that's a little different, um, for this one. And then I guess the only other thing I had was the, uh, the total acreage size. And everything is within. The zoning requirements as far as the 20 acres, um, I took a look at the zoning, uh, the town zoning and. It didn't really define what that included, if that's the whole enclosed site or just under the panels, um, it just said solar farm in general. Um, because it looks like both of these are over that 20 acres in total, based on what's on the plan sheets that we received, uh, today.
Dan Lang, can you help us with that?
Yes, I can, I just unmuted here, it's Dan Lang, um, just letting you know that everything is under the 20 acre threshold. From what we've done with every project of solar since day one, we've calculated the same as what we did with those and this is split into the two sites for that reason as well. Um, but they are both under the 20 acres and bringing up a good point, um, and, uh, I don't know how you would add this verbiage in there, but. We are going to be, um, doing our annual reviews as we always do with special use permits. One of the main things that I want to bring up when looking at any solar projects moving forward though is going to be, uh. If the, if the solar farm changes hands throughout the project. That, um, we're going to have to start getting, uh, the companies in here. Um, back in front of the planning board once the, the leasee may change on this, because that does occur and that had occurred within the town of Batavia recently. Um, so when these do change hands on the lease, uh, on who's holding the lease or however that works. Um, realistically, they don't have the special use permit issued to them because it was issued to the last company that, that was there. I do want to make sure that we're, uh, keeping an eye on that and I will be bringing them in. Um, if that does happen, so just, just a heads up on that one, but they are both under 20 acres to answer that, John.
Okay, now the special use permit stays with the land, we can make a requirement that should ownership change, we need to be notified. Will that work?
The, the special use permit does not stay with the land, um, the variances, variances and whatnot do, but special use permit is actually issued to the applicant. It is not staying with the land itself.
So do we need a new special use permit if the ownership changes?
Well, that's, that's why I wanted to bring this up to your attention is if, I wanted to just make it clear tonight because we've only got, uh. One more after this and obviously we have the solar moratorium up right now. Um, but I wanted to be very clear that you, you may want to add a little bit of language in there under the special use permit, should it change hands. That the, the new owner would have to come back in for a continuation of a special use permit.
Okay, have you got that, Kim?
Working on it.
Okay. Ask Dan if you have any questions.
Oh, he knows, he knows, I'll contact him.
I do, thank you, Kim.
You're welcome, Dan.
Okay, is there anything else on the special use permit?
Can I just ask a quick question?
Yes, sir.
On Dan's last point. Um, Dan, when you say they, we, the new company would have to certainly provide notice, that's fine. Are you saying they would have to undergo a new special permit review or just basically provide the notice to you so that the special use permit could be transferred over? And they would have to take subject to those conditions?
It, it would just be providing notice to us that a special use permit is now under somebody, so we have the contact information appropriate.
Understood.
Um, what, what we've run into is that there's been, you know, there's been some plantings, there's been some grass growing, some issues and fencing issues and then I contact someone and they no longer are the owner. We kind of get caught behind with that, so I just wanted to make sure that we're, we're moving in the right direction on our end.
Completely understand, that's fine, thank you.
Dan, does he have a question?
Do you have?
If. I change title. Of ownership of the land. Say like to a trust. Wha- wha- what would that do?
That would be a question for the town attorney, if, if and when that were to arise, Dan, I really don't have, uh, an answer for that one.
Well, and I think the special use permit would be issued to Cypress Creek, uh, to, you know, to the Trousdale Solar LLC. Um, for the land owned by a partridge. Correct?
Okay, thank you.
Correct.
So that would hopefully avoid if he, if he. Puts the land in trust and that would be something between him and to address.
Yes, it would, you're, you're correct in that, it would be between him and, right.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, is there anything else?
Yeah, and Ken, can you make sure that in your special use permit wording, I just want to verify that it's in here. That you have verbiage in there that the ground mount system will be. Put in. For the back calls. A letter or some verbiage from National Grid about the front four poles that they've. Done their due diligence to try to limit the number of poles. Steve spoke about the plantings in the berm. And I want to make sure that the decommissioning and.
I'll, please hold on a second, you've given me a lot to write here.
Okay. I just want to make sure we're not skipping or anything like that.
Yep, just go slower.
Understood, yeah, just.
Uh, let's see, plantings, berm. Decommissioning in contingent on, uh. Engineering in the town.
That's right. That's what I have here, I've been taking notes, does anyone have any?
I had half of it down and then he.
Does anyone have anything else?
I just want to clarify what, what John Long was indicating and I think that more or less what he was getting at is during the course of any. Clearing or any, um, uh, soil, you know, soil removal, the topsoil remains on site. Is that correct, John?
Yeah, that's correct. I assume that's what those stockpiles are for in the back of the property to stockpile the topsoil for use should, uh, decommissioning ever occur, correct?
Yeah, that, that's more for, um, you know, post-construction, um, if decommissioning would happen again, we would, you know, remove the topsoil. Um, you know, remove any, uh, of the electrical components and then put the topsoil back on, so no, no removal of topsoil from the site.
Okay, are we ready to address this? Okay, not hearing any negative, we will, uh, I would entertain a motion for, uh, the Trousdale Solar and this is project number one. For, uh, the site plan review and, well, let's do the site plan review first. I, I entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve the site plan. Um, with, and sees that engineering, um, town Batavia engineering review is satisfied. Um, that, uh, and that, um. Um, the Ag and Markets, uh, concerns are addressed. And that the, uh, other items that were discussed tonight relative to visual impacts are also addressed.
Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second it, Paul McCullough.
Seconded by Paul. Roll call, Kim?
Steve Tanner?
Yes.
Paul McCullough?
Yes.
Jonathan Long?
Yes.
Jeremy Lyles?
Yes.
Kathy Jazinski?
Yes. Okay, now we'll do the site plan and, uh, the number two parcel, this is the four megawatts, the smaller one. And I, I believe it would be the same thing and we just need to have two motions because they're two projects.
So move.
Motion by Jeremy, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Steve Tanner? Roll call please.
Jeremy Lyles?
Yes.
Steve Tanner?
Yes.
Jonathan Long?
Yes.
Paul McCullough?
Yes.
Kathy Jazinski?
Yes. Okay, now we'll go back to project one, the five milligrams and we're going to now look at the special use permit. With all of the items that we listed earlier. I'd entertain a motion for approval.
So move, Paul McCullough.
Hey, is there a second?
Second, John Long.
Second by John Long? Roll call please, Kim?
Paul McCullough?
Yes.
Jonathan Long?
Yes.
Steve Tanner?
Yes.
Jeremy Lyles?
Yes.
Kathy Jazinski?
Yes. Okay, now we're doing the special use permit for parcel two, the four mil- milliwatts.
Motion approved.
That would be by Jeremy, is there a second?
Thank you.
Steve Tanner? Roll call please, Kim?
Jeremy Lyles?
Yes.
Steve Tanner?
Yes.
Paul McCullough?
Yes.
Jonathan Long?
Yes.
Kathy Jazinski?
Yes. Okay, it looks like we've covered everything and we've approved the application and we've mitigated to the best of our ability. I want to thank the whole board, this was a lot of work, a lot of time, I want to thank the developers for working with us so closely. And, uh, I just think you, you did a good job, we can't make everyone happy, but we did our best, thank you very much. Okay, is there anything, anything else on this, on these applications?
Yes, Jerry's got something.
Yes, Jerry?
Kathy, um, we had provided a couple of draft resolutions for the project, um, certainly up to the board, whether they would like to use that language or not, but just want to make that clear that. That was available to the board.
I did see them and they were very good, it's not a usual procedure, I did like them and, and I would take it into consideration. Do you need it for your financing or anything? What we would.
We will, we will need resolutions adopted.
We will need a resolution.
Absolutely.
Okay, well then.
For each project.
Our call sheets aren't enough, this is what we normally provide.
Mark.
Um, I haven't seen what your call sheets are, so I'm sorry, but, uh. It, it's possible, I mean, I, I guess what the only thing I would, I mean, the, the resolutions that we provided basically lay, try to lay out a little bit of what, how you got to the posis- the decision. Um, I, I think. As long as the conditions are spelled out clearly. Um, for the, what the, what the conditions of the approvals are, I think that's something that Jerry, you could probably live with.
Okay, if you, if you find you can't, or Steve Mountain, if you've got something to say?
Well, I was just gonna say that, yeah, well, uh, the verbiage on those call sheets and the, uh, secret determinations. Um, you know, we'll help, um, Kim and Kathy get those prepared. And, oh, I don't think we have a, an issue or a problem, because we do want to make sure that it's. Clear in everybody's mind that those conditions are very clear, so we'll get those in draft form, you guys can take a look at them and then we'll. Uh, and if there's anything that isn't clear on either side, then I would suggest that we come back here and make sure they are, but. Um, I think that's kind of our normal practice.
Okay, great, that sounds good.
While you're doing that, feel free to pirate any language, uh, from those resolutions, their suggestions to the town. And hopefully they're helpful, feel free to utilize whatever, uh, you know, in the seeker findings and the, that, that we provided, you know, the draft ones or the, or the resolutions. Feel free to use whatever language you think is appropriate.
Sure, thanks.
We'll get back to you on that, thank you. I will send a copy of the resolutions to all the board members, if you see something you don't like, let me know, okay? Is there anything?
I'll, I'll just close by thanking you, uh, as well for the opportunity this evening and the board's attention to our projects and the work and. Details and, uh, level of, of effort that went into this, thank you all.
You're welcome, I think we all learned a lot with this, we appreciate your, your work too. Okay, we, now we have, um, we have Brandon Lewis waiting patiently, he's been here since the beginning of the meeting, he's next on the agenda. Now, this is something, uh, he's just going to tell us a little bit about his project. And, uh, we need, because he's looking for a special use permit, we're going to have to set up a public hearing. So, um, where, where are you, um? Brandon, there you are, okay, uh, do you want to tell us a little bit about your project, Brandon?
Uh, sure, yeah, do I sound okay?
Yeah, you've been, you've been to us before, but, uh, this, this is a little more, um, expanded, so go ahead.
Sure, yeah, well, I, I'd like to, uh, thank you all, uh, for letting me speak tonight and, uh, yeah, I hope to put up a, a 20 acre solar farm on my property, no, I'm just kidding, I'm sorry. Uh, I think the last time I was before this board, there was quite a, uh, a, a, uh, controversy regarding 5G. That was the, that was the hot button issue a year ago, I believe, the, the last time I, I was in front of you fine folks, so. Uh, yeah, forgive me, but I, I had to, uh, make that attempt at humor lighten things up a little, it's been, been a long meeting, right? Um, but yeah, as, as many of you have seen, I, uh, am opening or intend to open, uh, a, a multifaceted facility. Uh, out there at the former Polar Wave property, uh, chief among them being a outdoor shooting range and training facility. As well as, uh, really, uh, several, uh, outdoor uses. Drive-in movie theater, uh, athletic fields, um. Venue space, uh, kinda, uh, again, there's, there's quite a plan that we've presented, uh, to. to you with several different uses, so, yeah, we'd really like to put that property back to use for the town and, you know, local residents.
You've certainly got a lot of ideas here. The one that concerns me is the firearm training. You realize you're looking at a special use permit, and with that, we can put restrictions, the hours that you could do it, the days you could do it, do you understand that?
Correct, yeah, and, you know, I hope we can obviously work together and come up with something that works for everyone, you know, obviously considering the geography, where that land is and its use, you know, its use potential for other purposes and just where it's situated, and given the track record, I'll say, of my facility out in Virgin and the level of professionalism we'll be bringing, I think we'll be able to mitigate any of those concerns.
And this went to county planning and they approved it. Did they have any conditions on it, Dan, Dan Lang?
They did have some conditions on it that are listed in there, nothing significant that would prohibit, nothing we haven't seen before. I do not have that right in front of me at the moment, but that will be something that we would read at the next meeting prior to the public hearing and prior to any site plan or special use permit.
Okay, I think we should have the meeting first to discuss this deeper, so we understand more about what he's offering. I'm interested in the safety, I want to make sure if there's shooting out there, that it's safe, and that area is for recreation, so a lot of these things fit in very easily. Does anyone have any comments or questions?
Kathy, it's Dan again. Just wanted to touch base real quick with you and reach out to everybody on the planning board as well. If you do have any questions or concerns on this project, if you would address them and send them over to me, because I'm meeting with Steve Mountain, Tom Lichtenthall, in regards to this itself, but we have received, I can tell you, just as many phone calls of either concerns or praise for it, and to be, to be wide open about it, we've got a lot, we've got a lot of, lot of input coming back in on this and regards to this. We have a lot of positive coming in on this, but we also have a lot of negatives, and we also have a lot of questions we're going to have to review. So just to not duplicate over and over and over again and beat it up, I would love to have this centralized as to where you can send the questions in. We obviously can set up some Zoom meetings, some phone calls, or whatever we need to do, so we are definitely spending some actual, some hard time on reviewing this and making sure that, that everything is good. There's some unknowns to us even, Steve and I were talking this morning, and so I was talking to Tom as well, there's some questions that we're going to have that we don't even know where to begin with, so we're going to, we're going to meet up, put that together after tonight, after you set the public hearing and go from there.
Okay, now this was my thought, my thought was to have Brandon come in and tell us the details of everything that he's planning, review his application, and then at the next meeting have the public, the public hearing, because then we'll understand what we're talking about. That's what I would like to do, would, any ideas from the board?
Kathy, you're saying that two meetings from now would be the public hearing, next meeting we would get presented with the site plan by the-
The first meeting in April, he could present us with the site plan, we don't, we wouldn't vote on it until after the public hearing, but at least we would understand everything that he's talking about.
I agree with that, because that was one of the comments I was going to make, is the only thing I saw on my town email account was the actual referral to the county, I haven't seen any site plans on this. And, yeah, similar, I love this idea, I think it's a great idea, similar concerns, you know, with regards to birmingham and sound attenuation, so the site plans, I'm sure, will go through that and, you know, give us a level of comfort, or not, this project.
Okay, well, then that's what, does everyone agree with that? Our first meeting in April, we will ask Mr. Lewis to come in and make his presentation, and Dan, we'll hit, maybe we'll have some answers to our questions then, and then we would have the public hearing on the second meeting in, John Della Penna, you have a question? Oh, wait, you have to be unmuted. Sarah, can you unmute him? There, okay.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Could you just include the zoning burden appeals in all your meetings and stuff, so we can keep him pressed for anything, in case anything does come up, then we'll know about it, okay? Just include me in the meetings, thank you.
We always do, okay. Okay, so our first meeting in April would be with Mr. Lewis, our second meeting would be the public hearing, and Dan Lang has a question.
No, I just wanted to clarify the dates and make sure that Brandon was good with everything as well, but we would be looking at an April 6 meeting for a site plan, some middle as far as reviewing of the project itself, and then an April 20th for the public hearing, correct?
That sounds correct, I don't have my calendar in front of me.
Yes, it is correct, Dan, I do have the calendar, April 6 is our next meeting, and then the 20th would be good for the public hearing.
Okay, thank you, Kim.
You're welcome.
I have a question.
Oh, sorry.
Mr. Lewis?
Yeah, I guess if I could just get an indication, or when would I find out, I guess, the issues and the complaints, I guess mostly, that people have? Is that something that I could get access to before the public hearing, so that I can prepare to address them, or how does that process work?
Yes, you'll be receiving them very shortly, we wanted to wait until tonight's meeting, and then Steve Mountain, myself, and Tom Lichtenthall usually sit down, we put together a comment review letter, and that would be part of the comment review letter, so you would have ample time to address any concerns, mitigate any of the issues that were at hand. So we'll definitely, my guess is you'll be getting that sometime, we'll get that out this week.
Okay, perfect.
We would probably do our final vote on the special use permit in May, the first week in May, the first meeting, the first Tuesday.
The only other thing I was, I was going to ask is, you know, there are several different projects all wrapped up into one, if it's a scenario where, you know, let's say one project is very easy to approve, I want to do a hayride, you know, haunted hayride for the kids this fall, is it something where each one of these projects is going to have its own special use permit per activity, or is it the entire project as a whole?
And reviewing, as far as from the seeker standpoint, this would have to be reviewed as in a whole, regardless, we can't segment and section out different parts of exactly what you want to do. Knowing the full scope of exactly what you're, what you're planning on out there, this is probably the best route, and it would be for a full outdoor recreation, and everybody, everything you have listed would then be okay. That's, that's really the way it has to be as far as the environmental review goes, so regardless, it makes sense to keep everything together.
Okay, sounds good, go ahead.
Oh, Steve, did you have something to add? I apologize.
Yeah, sorry, Steve Tanner, you mentioned just the referral, there, with that referral, there was a concept site layout plan and a rendering. Have you guys got, have you seen a copy of that yet or no?
Yes, I sent them to everyone.
It actually went out ahead of, probably ahead of the actual referral sheet, I think.
It did.
It went out as soon as I got it, I forward everything as soon as I get it. I wrote a little note there about this new project, and because you were constant, you may not have looked at it if you were concentrating on tonight's meeting, but if you don't have it, I'll resend it.
Okay.
Yeah, if you could resend it, that'd be great. I'm looking through my email now, so I might have dumped it by accident.
Yeah, I just want to do my email, the only thing I saw was the actual referral. Yeah, I've seen something previously, because it had just concepts of where things would go, but I can't find that in my email, so if you don't mind resending it, that'd be great.
I'll resend it.
All right.
Anything I get on this, you will get.
Okay.
Okay, is there anything else? Okay, well, I would entertain a motion to set a public hearing and a special use permit for recreational use of the land at 3269 Harloff Road. The public hearing would be on April 20th.
Oh, John Long.
Motion by John, is there a second? Second by Steve Tanner. Roll call, please, Kim.
Jonathan Long.
Yes.
Steve Tanner.
Yes.
Jeremy Lyles.
Yes.
Paul McCullough.
Yes.
Kathy Jazinski.
Yes. Okay, well, Mr. Lewis, you're set, we'll be seeing a lot of you for the next month, okay? And possibly we'll be emailing you, talking to you, and we'll work together, you saw that we do that, thank you very much.
Sounds good, thank you all.
Okay, next on the agenda is a zoning enforcement officer report, we've got Dan Lang here.
Yes, it's Dan Lang. The only thing we've got coming up, aside from the proposal over there on Harloff Road, is I did receive a package from Dave Ficorilla to make you all aware of. This is something Dave's been working on for a couple of years, I know we've brought it up in the past, but he's got to get over some more site plan stuff and work on some sewer issues with Steve Mountain and with the engineering, I think, before we can get anything submitted over to the county, he really wanted to get it to the county, but I don't know as though it's quite ready yet, we're actually reviewing that right now because we received that last week. Aside from anything else, Old Navy, Alta Beauty, they are looking to open up over there, looking to start construction in spring inside of the, as a tenant over on Veterans Memorial Drive. That's pretty much what I have, I know Steve wanted to touch base a little bit on the HP Hood stuff, so I'm going to kick it over to him real quick.
Okay, Steve Mountain.
Yeah, thanks. One of the items that you saw, Kathy, was from Clark Patterson, they're working with HP Hood, who is going to be building a water storage tank and some water main, the water main will be dedicated over to the town of Batavia, but as part of that, one of the seeker items, if you remember, the planning board was a lead agency in the generic environmental impact statement development, and so for every project in the ag park, you know, we take a look at that, those thresholds, and weigh whether we need to do additional seeker work or not. Well, this particular project, we definitely need to do something more than what we've done before, so I'm in the process of reviewing that with HP Hood and the county and Clark Patterson, so that'll be something that'll be an upcoming agenda item, so essentially you'll have to review the increase in water usage in the park, which was originally set at 614,000 gallons, and based on the full buildout as we know it now, as much as 1.8 million gallons for the future. So that's just an item that'll be more of, I think, more of an administrative item, but still a process that we'll have to go through. Does anybody have any questions right now? It'll be a little bit clearer once we have a concept plan and the seeker documents to review.
Yeah, as you get it to us, I will forward to the board, I told them that, that we couldn't address it this quick without talking to you, so, yeah.
Okay, that was it.
Well, thank you very much. Sharon, have you got anything for the board? Oops, Sharon's muted, Sarah. Okay.
Don't have anything.
Okay, and I see Greg Post is here tonight, our supervisor, do you have anything you'd like to mention? Oh, you got unmuted supervisor. There you go.
I'd like to thank all of you for the thoroughness and the professionalism you continue to bring to this community's planning board agendas and reviews. I compliment all of you for your attendance, and please don't hesitate to reach out with any questions you may have, so that our board can better support you and all the planning board members and all the constituents that bring forth projects to our community.
Thank you, Greg. Okay, my report, I really don't have anything, because we've already outlined what our next month meetings are going to be, continue to do your training, we've got some good training coming up, I think they're there on Tuesdays and Thursdays, you've got the information. If anyone doesn't get information they think they should have, let me know, I do send to everyone. Okay, so I would entertain a motion for adjournment unless someone has something else?
Motion to adjourn?
Motion by Steve, is there a second?
Second.
Who said that, John Long? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, no one, thank you very much, great job tonight, thank you everyone.
Really good meeting.
Thank you.
Very good, have a good night, guys.
Have a good night.
Night. Thank you, Sarah and Kim.
Welcome.
Good night, Kathy.
Good night.
Bye-bye.
I'm leaving.